So it's 3 o'clock, so it's time to begin the meeting and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, in due republi, for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Thank you. We'll begin the meeting with Bob Gasper, Emergency Services Communications. And I see you.
Good afternoon, Christians. My part of this gathering is to facilitate the gathering of 3 entities yourselves, 2 other members from the 911 Bureau, and at least 1 other member from the main GIS department. My I work for Ray Jakes, you can see on the screen, John Rice is the GIS supervisor in the 911 Bureau. And I look like Maria, if you're Claire and Amanda.
So, uh, okay, so thank you, Bob, for that introduction. And I guess I would say to the people, uh, well, you know, thank you for inviting us there today. And Claire Rudjansky is the executive director of the Main Geo Library Board. And I know you have met her before, her previous presentations. And Amanda is the PSAT Director, who we deal directly with at Franklin County for 911. So what our goal today, as I understand it, was to explain to you how the OrthoImagery Program works, benefits, the products that you use in Franklin County, or you can see in Franklin County as product of the E91 Dressing Application. And also what they see on the screen when 911 calls are placed within Franklin County. So at the Bureau, we use only GeoLibrary products for mapping. And so those, the OrthoImagery that you, they went to purchase today directly impacts what happens for your residents in Franklin County. And what I thought might be helpful for you today to understand the difference of the quality of imagery is for to have John ask that you spotlight John rather than Bob, because he's going to do the next part of the presentation. But what he's going to show you is within change requests, and that's the tool that your addressing officers at municipal level, and then also your county addressing officer who works on UTEs. Use this to submit address changes, new add, moves, deletes, new roads, all that to the Bureau. And then we incorporate that into the products that are, the mapping that is pushed out every PSAT in the state. So this is, the what, the mapping that you're going to see John display is what Amanda is supposed to see at the PSAT. So that's really what you understand, that this is, you know, one product of the 911 ecosystem. So I would ask John to give us a little, to share a screen and change request.
Thank you, Maria. But since I know I'm unable to share the screen. So the host is just able to share the screen.
So is Julie the host? Is Julie the host?
Uh, Jim, our IT guy is working on.
Okay.
I'm passing the buck to Jim.
Well, let me now just explain. So a little bit about the OrthoImagery Program, you heard from Claire. So we have, have a 5-year contract. And throughout that 5 years, it moved across the state in various locations, gave counties and then municipalities opportunities to apply into the program. Apparently this upcoming, 2022 will be the last year we have in this, this program. This contract in the foreseeable future. So in this, the way it's working is the state is actually paying, providing 2/3 of the cost of the imagery. And then the county pays the other 3rd. It is a great value. We don't know that there'll be any more. We don't know what the future of the OrthoImagery Program is beyond next year. As, you know, with our budget, the state budget right now does not have any dollars in it for future years. So, you know, this is a decision to make, but I guess I could say, suggest to you that you consider it. Give it good consideration. So do we have John's situation solved at this point?
No. Not sure where it is.
I don't, I can't do it, sorry.
I don't have it. Just show me aloud.
I wonder if there's another way for you to do it now.
Can you do it now?
Okay, so you're now close, John.
Nope, see that?
All right, can you share a log in here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did she say?
All right, good. So, um, so this is GeoLibrary Service. So we actually have 2 versions of this. One version is used by the 911 centers, because that's a closed system. And then we have another version that's available to the public, which is what the address officer uses, the county officer, the municipality actually uses. And so what I'm talking about here today is the, what the municipality officer uses.
In that part, it's the county?
Yes. So, uh, so the data that you're seeing is actually, is the same data that you, the address officer and for the 911 center. Let's start the screen here. From the town, you're over here. And so we can start off by, let's zoom into an area of the 911 county. So what you're seeing here is the area of imagery that you bought in 2016. Um, it's, uh, the resolution is 24-inch, which means that, you know, 1 pixel, 0 to 24 inches in there.
So, well, John, kind of, just keep in mind that this imagery is 5 inches old at this point.
So this is 2016 that we're looking at. So it was, uh, the imagery was taken sometime in the end of April 2016. So typically, the GeoLibrary, when they do their, in the contract that they use, there are those parts that they do what's called EFO. So they try to get it, uh, so they try to get the photos taken after the snowmelt and just before the trees start to bud. And so this allows us to see, uh, see things that would actually be hidden by, uh, by all the trees, by foliage. So if you have any questions, ask that as a question. Go ahead and ask. And so to contrast what, uh, what's being used in Franklin County. You want here? So can we zoom to a different area? Well, who gets on the air and has his town township?
That was taken in the fall, I mistake.
Yeah, so, so what I wanted to show you for contrast is, so you can, you see this line in that? So there's that difference in foliage on each side. So on the right side, you're looking at the 2016 imagery that I've taken, you know, that's taken in the part of, uh, the Franklin County. So it just happened over a lot, that was township, and this is where, where it counted at. And then on the left side, you're looking at, uh, that imagery that we get from the US Department of Agriculture. They have a, a program called NAB, so it's the National Agricultural Initiative Program. So they typically take their photos in the fall of the year. So what you're seeing up left is, uh, late fall, uh, 2018. And so you can see, you can see the colors of the leaves changing. And so this kind of gives you the contrast of, you know, what the OrthoImagery gives you, and by default, you can, you know, you know, so like, obviously, John has chosen that to participate in the OrthoImagery Program. So, you know, in order to have some sort of area of photography, imagery, you use what the Department of Agriculture applies.
Can you bring that up to the lake a minute?
I won't say in 3 years.
Can you bring that so we can see the lake part of that for a minute? There.
Like that?
Yeah, thank you.
And so you can kind of see how, uh, it's kind of hard to see the growth of what's, what this NAB imagery is opposed to what it looks like, uh, when it's in the fall.
It's difficult to compare when you're comparing 1 from the summer and 1 from the fall. Yeah. It's not a good comparison.
Well, the point is, uh, the leaves form around here view, that's basically. So we, in a very small amount of time, to do the imagery. So now I think we can show that, uh, the new base actual standard in the OrthoImagery Program is 60, is 18-inch. So you can see, we'll show you the difference now, just, you know, the 6-inch improvement will make in the current program. So.
So now we're looking at imagery in the county vehicles. And so this area, the, uh, the imagery resolution is 18-inch.
Wait, is this one yours?
Excuse me?
Is this is one of the ones you've been talking about?
Yeah, so this is.
So this was taken in the summer, right?
No, this is actually taken in the spring. So this, this is a lot of, a lot of, you know, evergreen trees here. That's why it's really green.
It could slide over to more, but you can see the resolution of buildings, the improved resolution of the buildings in this compared to the 24-inch. And even if I zoomed out, how you can see the quality of the imagery so much more.
So that's marked perfect.
Yeah, so this, uh, this 18-inch is now the base imagery that they would get.
It also demonstrates the, uh, location of the driveways and, uh, access, which road is best for, for accessing that, that, um, that location. Uh, yes, there are a lot of confused trees covering this geographic area. That's just the level of draw, depends on, you know, where you are in the state of thing. But you can clearly see if there's a back door, a front door, where it's best to park. If, if a larger vehicle could get in there, could they turn around? You can make those kinds of decisions. Absolutely. You did join.
So those are a lot, man. Who's are those?
The towns usually provide that data, uh, to the, either directly to the Bureau or through the GeoLibrary Board. And there are several towns in Franklin County that are able to provide that data. And there's another whole project coming on that's improving the accuracy of the satellite, which isn't familiar for today's discussion, but, um, it will break the benefit. The 911 and the, um, towns of Franklin County. So, yeah, so that is something that they control directly. So when a map phone call comes in, uh, the map zooms to look at the address of the call. And so depending on, um, the best OrthoImagery that we could find within the state system, that is also provided, you know, as backdrop to the call painter. It's, you know, and they, that somebody, say they added an address point on Jefferson Court. Uh, today, tomorrow, we, you know, get that into the system and push it up to the PSAT. So it's all integrated and it all works together. We don't use what I've heard, the discussion around free options. And I think by that mean, that also commonly returns to like Google Maps. But Google Maps, uh, there are issues with Google Maps, uh, that I guess I'll leave to John to explain.
Oh, Google Maps, uh, sorry, it's, it's pretty useful when you're looking at, you're using Google Earth. But when you want to use it in other applications, Google actually makes you pay a subscription fee.
So this costs, it is free to the state to use. And it's also not scheduled with Google Maps as to when they people update or what they've actually driven. And it's unclear to us when we look at Google Maps. When you see a date on Google Maps, that's the date they published it, not necessarily the date that it was filmed on. So this really don't tell me what the accuracy of the data is based on information provided by Google. So we don't incorporate Google Maps as, you know, in substitution for the imagery. We do use within our product called Google Street View. And maybe you've used, uh, dispatchers have access to that, where they can, where it's available. And if it's not available, say why, they can, uh, watch that and see the road itself and, you know, as if you were driving down it. But that, so, so this practice, you have that tool. This is, you know, uh,
Yeah.
That part there, the Street View, Google Street View.
You can turn this.
So they didn't have access to that, but, uh, it's not a primary resource. So, uh, that's a recent addition. And that is helpful, because then we can say, oh, it's the, you know, the, you know, outside, like, officer, you're a little bit more certain. You're sure.
So you guys are using Google's option on that?
No, we're using it, Google Street View, a product within the 911 center in addition to the OrthoImagery you're seeing here today. So both of those products are there. But Google Street View is not a substitution for OrthoImagery. It's a different kind of tool that just, uh, for the, this practitioner to use in assisting emergency responders to the right place. Interestingly, now that I got the order, isn't that, again, because Google Street View can age, just like any other product. And it has caused me confusion at least one time that I can remember, um, in using the product. So, anyway, uh, so again, I guess, you know, I'm not really sure what you'd like to see at this point, but I just would emphasize, how on the deal I would want is there, uh, as a state representative to that point, to make sure of the public, private, county, um, you know, the state local and county representatives, as private, uh, business representatives. And we all work together to try to come up with funds to provide needed imagery services, recharge, basically, once we purchase that, to users. So this was the OrthoImagery Program. It's kind of a keystone kind of product for us. We've had it for a few years. But this opportunity with the state paying 2/3 of the cost and the county, oh, they happen to come up with the 3rd. Isn't great, you know? Uh, so essentially.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did you earlier say that going forward, that, that money's not in the state budget?
Right.
So what you're saying is that, if I'm not mistaken, that right now, currently, they would pay 2/3, right?
Right.
And then there's a, if I'm, how long does that last? We talked about that the other day. It's like.
There's 1 more year of this. So we have, we have federal funds, and state funds, and combination company. And Claire, correct, they come wrong, uh, they come up with 2/3 of it, and then the county picks in the other 3rd.
No, what I mean is going forward is how often do we have to update this?
Well, in the, in the past, we've had a 5-year rotation, right, Claire?
Yes, the idea is to get updated imagery on a countywide basis. And the intent is to cover the entire state with OrthoImagery. And, uh, you know, look, every 5, conceptually, also every 10 years. So that there's always sort of updated information. We think that things don't change, but they do over time. There's little subdivisions, there's changes, the roads get moved slightly, there's new housing developments.
Yeah.
Things like that. So, you know, the intent was that we would also plan to do this again in the future.
So if you were to buy this, let's say, this year, right, so you get to, you pay the 3rd, right? And that's linked in with the E91, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so when they update, in other words, could you just buy this once and use it for 10 years? Or what? How's that work?
Sure.
Even if you didn't get the update?
Yes, once it's available, it's publicly available. That's, that's also part of the.
So even if you, even if you guys updated the old service, would still click right to the one you had?
Okay, so if you, by what you saw, John, you're right now at 24-inch and, I don't know where it was. That, that's, is this 24 here, Harrington?
Yes, actually, this is actually the PSAT.
Okay, so we're in the PSAT, and you're right, oh, that's the PSAT right there. It was built, and you're right across the street. And now you're at the courthouse, right? So, um, anyway, so is this 24-inch?
Yes.
All right, so if you did that, then this is the map you could, uh, you will save for the next, uh, if another program comes about, uh, if, if that becomes a reality.
The current map that we already purchased in 2016, right?
Right.
That can currently be linked with the 911 and our dispatch services here in this county, right?
It is. It is a PSAT map. This is what they see.
So this is what they see when they type in the addresses currently?
Well, actually, when a call comes in, see 469 right there, it was 469, if you're breaking through Harrington. It was go right to that area.
Okay, so that, so we currently have that one right now, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Then nobody used that, or that, so I don't think it's been used as much as it could. So why would we invest more money when we already have the map?
Because it's not, it's fine control information at this point. So there's, there's a lot of roads and buildings, um, and road changes that have happened in the last 5 years.
How do you know that?
Because that's what I have few people employed to do, nothing else, every day at work. That's what they do, is add moves and changes in the municipalities and townships in the state of Maine. And I keep doing this a full time.
Thank you.
I noticed in the news just recently that there were 2 search and rescues in Franklin County for hypers. One of the nice things that this imagery can assist with is for those areas where it's not necessarily the site, the location of a stranded hyper or an injured hyper or hunter is not readily apparent. So they're out on the woods, they got there by walking. So having EFO imagery with a little bit better resolution, okay, that's why it's just a tad fuzzy. It's because it's tied up to imagery, can be extremely helpful. And you can, it works very nicely with, say, all positions, this is GPS. So if, I think those hypers, um, they go far away, but that's okay. Uh, then those hypers had to have cell phones, so I think they were able to, you know, hone in on their cellphone or get GPS coordinates to assist with their location. Uh, but maps like this can help identify how, how far can you drive in and when do you need to start walking?
Where can, where can I land a helicopter to then help people out, you know, get out? Uh, but I wanted to back up a little to the backcountry rescue. So with cell calls, um, we get all that along, and hopefully we get, it's called a base 2 of the location, which is a, you know, an approximated, um, um, location of a cell caller. And sometimes in the backcountry, uh, you know, we don't get that information, but we have the ability to guide call, uh, to guide callers through, looking at their phone and providing a left long, which we can then enter into this system, and then the map will zoom into it. So there are ways, there's many different ways that we can provide, uh, get that longs and assist with lost hikers, injured people, uh, whatever the scenario, it might be a snowmobile or actually, maybe it's off a trail, you know, trails on these maps, all kinds of different things. John, you want to show us something? Here, or are you just showing? So. This, you know, I mean, OrthoImagery and accurate and current is, is really critical when we're trying to find people, is, you know, especially in the back, in the woods. I think that we covered.
Okay. So what I think of this imagery is it helps us to, um, to actually find buildings that we don't currently have address for, address for. So, so let's refer to these arrows, are we, we're looking at the area inventory. And we didn't have an address in our database, and we really couldn't figure out what the address was. So we started tagging the buildings to assist your travel addressing officer to, to, uh, help us, you know, to narrow the address that should be.
So we find these, you know, contact them and, um, ask her to help us get an address for these buildings. Or whatever the addressing officer is in that particular community. Or whatever the address and officer is in that particular community. So. The, uh, the other thing is once a county buys into the program, towns have the ability to even buy at higher resolutions. And so does the county actually Hancock County, for example, uh, just made the choice to, to do, uh, 12 inch. Uh, that hasn't been added and they, that was flown recently and we're processing getting that into our servers now. But we can show you that if you're interested, but the build 12, six and. Is there anything I can add? Can I do three?
Sure. So Hancock County for the spring of 2020 purchased 18 inch imagery, Maria's right. That Hancock unorganized territories purchased 12 inch. So it's really exciting for all of Hancock County, the entire county, the organized and the unorganized, uh, uh, townships are covered with recent imagery that is, you know, useful for them. Now others also have access to that. So, you know, for economic development or municipalities that just don't have the funds, uh, they're able to access this imagery. So it's not only benefiting the E911 program. It's also benefiting, um, other users for whatever. The geography that you might have.
Are we looking at the 18 here?
So I changed some different applications. So this is a GIs application that we use in Alice. And I kind of wanted to show the imagery that, that we've gotten for Hancock County. So currently we're seeing is what looks like a 12 inch.
Are you sure because of both click there?
Yeah, but if I, I can turn on 12 inches. This is what the 18 inch looks like.
Yeah, alright.
So actually I can, I can do.
And you see, yeah, you can see how distorted it is on the right side that, you know, here. That's because the resolution is under us.
Yeah. So left side of 12 inch and the right side of the 18.
Can you zoom up? There's such a large area so you can test. Go out a little. I think you can see the difference and then do the line. They, yeah, you can really kind of see it. Yeah. So I've got focus, focus there. The difference.
I know you were asking previously if you already have the 2016 imagery, why isn't that good enough? Well, it's, it's a great resource to have. It's always helpful to know, you know, what it looked like in time. So have, you know, having access to that is also very beneficial to have. So this is historical, um, uh, database of what did it look like in 2016? But, you know, we're here, uh, sharing this information with you today because we're focused on the spring of 2022. And by then your data will be six years old. So, you know, we're, we're getting into that, you know, post past five years. Um, and, you know, all types of data, whether it's parcel maps, uh, that work with this. We, we always like to have it current, uh, because that's what is useful. And it's, I mean, it is useful to know, well, the data is from 2016. So if there happens some changes, you just need to expect those. Uh, that our program, our recent program started in the spring of 2017 and this one is going through the spring of 2022. So that's why we're sharing this information with you today because we're, uh, hoping to, uh, to have a good flying season next spring. And it is the last year of that current program. And the state does have funds available that we've set aside, uh, you know, to assist the counties. And Maria's right, is that the two thirds? So the state paid two thirds of the cost and we asked that the county pay one third. Uh, if you, you know, from representing the state, if you have other places that you can get funds from, uh, I don't mind teaming with other organizations or agencies or, you know, somebody, landlord or whatever else is going on to, uh, to get those, to get those funds. Uh, we will be looking to the GeoLibrary and the board will be looking at implementing another OrthoImagery program. But without dollars coming in, we might have a program, we just won't be able to implement. So.
My comment has been all along. So far Franklin County has invested $50,000 and I don't even know where the films are or whatever we have. I don't think anybody's ever used it. So I, I'm not really supportive of this program.
Uh, so the $50,000 is that who spent in 2016?
Yes.
Then, then it creates use every day of itself.
Who's using it?
The 911 call, uh, call takers. So when that call comes in anywhere from Franklin County, this is, that, those areas of imagery is available to manage.
You worship every day as here? Yeah. No, that's what we have for 911.
That's what you're using is this program?
Yes.
Fine. Something for $50,000.
So you have two choices. I can understand. I don't understand the Monday thing. Yeah. For the organized towns, your share would be $20,128. And then if you wanted to do either or, having all four gas UTS, it, uh, is $20,254. So in total, only, I'll say worth of $40,000, you're going to get $122,000 worth of, uh, OrthoImagery. So, so the state, you know, with this, through this program, the choices yours, I'm not pushing it one way or the other. I just, I just know this is a real benefit to the imagery and I didn't want you to miss an opportunity. And maybe you may have something to add about its uses within a center from 911 or paths. So I'm saying to the candidates out there.
Hi, I was wondering if there was some confusion, but I'm actually here for the conversation about cannabis that's coming up next.
Alright. Well, I don't have any opinion on that. Okay. Yeah. Well, we're going to be hard act to follow. But you know, you know, I'm just looking at this one from the screen. So say it was a hostage situation at one of these addresses. And what this does is, you know, this could provide valuable information to law enforcement about, you know, safety areas and how to access, uh, a building, uh, you know, that kind of thing. So it's this, this all kinds of emergency uses you can imagine, um, they're looking at, uh, there.
I'm looking at the pricing, uh, from, uh, 2016 for Franklin. And I see that if you, for the, um, county, it was 28,000 and for the UTs, it was a 12,000 for a total of 41,167. Uh, so very, very good.
Those are another $10,000 for the, uh, to, to check on this before they take the monies. So it's a total of 50,000.
Uh, Terry?
Yes.
The, uh, Franklin County for the way to the judge, that was 25,000 and 15,000 come from the UT.
Yeah. And then we have 10,000 for, to get involved in this, check it to see. So it's another payment, another $10,000.
No, I thought that was money that they put away one year.
That is correct.
To use towards.
That is correct. Yeah. It was 40,000.
So it's only 40 something.
No, it's okay. Um, I was kind of curious as well. I, I wasn't the executive director then, but I knew about the program then. So I wanted to just give a look. Uh, because one of the things that has happened is that we, we do have better resolution and lower costs.
Yeah. So you got a question. Yeah. So for the same money that you spent five years ago, are you going to get much better resolution?
But the federal government in the past has funded this and now they're going to pull the funding?
No, the state.
The state. So they don't see the value in this or what's their reason?
Well, I just think, um, it's the current economic times that have made some tough choices at the state level of what fund.
Well, we're working on that as well. I mean.
We are working on it.
Yeah. Right. Okay. We are working on it. We're not going to take, um, uh, no funding for an answer. But, uh, we're pretty creative. We'll come up with other solutions. But, uh, the two thirds cost for the state and the one third cost for the county, uh, I'm not sure, you know, that that's going to, I mean, that would be under consideration, you know? I mean, I can see in the future, this hap, this will be voted on by the board. Okay? But, uh, you know, doing the 50 50 split or something else. I mean, what I would really love is to have the entire state remaining informed at one time so that everybody benefits from it. But, you know, this is, this is the program. Try to, you, you know, make it as attractive as possible and do it either on a five, six or 10 year basis. So that regardless of whether it's a, a populated, you know, southern county or a more rural county, whether it's Amustick County or Washington, that they, they all have the same playing field. Um, I'll have to tell you that the, uh, uh, the counties and the municipalities that participate, um, and use the data are repeat customers. Okay? I don't need, you know, so, um, I, you know, one of the things I'm hearing is that you perhaps haven't taken advantage of the data that you got in 2016. And to be fair, we do need to have some sort of mapping, um, skills. Okay? Uh, and our software, but that's where you start to engage your tax members or the, um, uh, economic development or, you know, your consultants that you hire. I'm sure they use this data. I mean, cause what I'm hearing is that they're not accessing it. And I, I get that. I mean, you have to have the software to, 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 to do that. But I do hear also that there's other agencies that are supporting Franklin County, both the county organized communities and the unorganized territories that are using this data. And I think if we took a little time, we could come up with, you know, who's accessing it and what decisions are there, you think? From whether it's a camp owner or, um, you know, one of your towns that is more rural in nature. Um, uh, like I know that Carabasit Valley, uh, bought up to increase resolution. But, you know, I'm sure us this could find use for it or new share. My mother actually lives in, um, uh, Newport, that's not in your county, is it?
It's not.
I mean, it's not in your county, is it? I'm sorry. Uh, but it's close. It's close. Uh, because, you know, all of these roads and whatnot will end at the county line. They keep rolling. So having updated information of all your neighbors is also useful.
Right. I get the local, you know, local town uses information, customer, all kinds of things.
Yeah. I'd like to have this, this program we're looking at is actually, it was what all the municipal addresses and most of the community in the county. So they, they all use this area. The 911 center uses this area imagery. Um, our staff at the 911 bureau, we use this imagery to our work to assist, you know, all the, all the towns and counties. You know, we're not going to use by the land use plan until we get the land use plan to mention. I'm sure they use this imagery all the time too.
Right. But that's the state agencies are using it, but also the private sector and educational and nonprofits. Um, I mean, besides parcel mapping and zoning and emergency management, permitting and site analysis and natural resource inventory, those are just some of the real big, kind of, you know.
You know, it's a, it's a good tool for, you know, when you're looking at development. There'd be a, yeah, a lot of the town GIs is just the road center lines. And they use, they rely on this information for the backdrop, for the, for the picture behind those road center lines. Um, so this can be helpful when they're looking at different kinds of development within their communities.
Well, you've given me something to think about. We've been a little so long because we got to go to pot.
Well, we're here and, um, anytime you have any questions, feel free to reach out. I've been doing it for a long time. And, you know, we're here every day of the week. So we can answer your questions.
Thank you.
Try and help people. We appreciate your time, uh, today.
Anybody have any more questions?
No, just to be full of that, if I'm going to go pick up some of the illegal harvest.
Yeah.
Right. It's really nice that we got, you know, um, being taught.
Those are not under green trees.
Having companies that have on buildings that weren't being cast through this program, trust me. So there, there is some value sometimes, unexpected value to these pictures.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Alright.
Okay. Our next turn appointment will be with Amanda Meckrich, Melman, Melman. And it's about going to pot.
It is. Um, and I'm just going to mention really quickly that, so what, what my understanding of what's going on today is that this is kind of a very informal first pass at this discussion. Um, what I'm hoping that this will spur is a conversation about whether, um, either a specific township or whether the entire county decides to, to opt in. It's not the county, but I guess it's just the unorganized townships. Um, and just in terms of what was, what was just said about the illegal harvest is obviously like anything else, the more that this is regulated, the more the black market goes away. So that would be a good first conversation point. Um, so I just, you know, then because my understanding was this was pretty informal. I put some notes together, um, that I'd like to just kind of run through, but I'm happy to answer as many questions as I can.
I have a question. Do you have a sister named Alyssa on that?
And she's not my sister. She's my cousin.
Okay. An orac.
Oh, okay. Fantastic. Um, so yeah, so my name is Amanda Melnick. And I'm the owner of Maine Cannabis Consultants. Um, I've worked in the cannabis space for about over five years now. Um, and I've worked very closely with a number of towns and cities, um, as they've decided whether or not to opt in, um, including Portland, South Portland, Bangor, the border of Auburn, Wardeno, Standish, Wellness, Gardner, uh, Bridgeton, uh, Poland, Midas, anyway, a, a bunch. Um, and, uh, but this is the first that I had a client who was interested, um, in, in possibly getting into the industry in unorganized territory, which is why we're here today. Um, I have also been really involved at the state level. Um, and I've attended nearly every meeting and legislature session, um, in Augusta that had cannabis, um, on the docket over the last several years. Uh, so in terms of the idea of opting in for a deluge cannabis, um, I know that there's, there, there's, there's a lot. There's a lot, there's a lot there, right? So even though medical cannabis has been in the state for a very long time, it's really kind of just come into the open in a lot of ways and really been more out there in the last two, three, four years. I think it's important to understand that currently, medical caregivers or people who do grow marijuana do, the towns and the municipalities and unorganized townships do not have to opt in for that to be happening. So currently, there's definitely people who are growing medically all over the county. Medical rules at the state level are not close to as strict as they are for adult use. So what opting in for adult use cultivation would do is it would make it so that all of the rules that the state has put in place, which are expansive, all of the security that they expect have to be followed. And it gives the state more opportunity to watch over those licenses as well. The adult use cannabis industry is very new, but it will be highly, highly regulated. If you're interested and you haven't seen the statute and the rules, you should definitely go take a look at that. You can find that on the Office of Marijuana Policies website under adult use. But to give you kind of an idea of the vast security rules, there have to be video cameras absolutely everywhere and anywhere that cannabis is. That means even in hallways, that it, you know, it might be carried for, not just where it's grown or harvested or trimmed or packaged. The recordings of, you know, from those cameras have to be kept for months. There needs to be monitor alarm systems. There need to be locks and windows and sensors on anything that can open. So any window, any door, outdoor related cameras, there's plenty more. Some additional rules, no one under twenty-one is allowed to be in any adult use facility. All employees have to have state mandated employee ID cards. There's operation plans that have to be submitted to the state and very closely followed. And even to get a license, the application and the licensure procedure is very intense. So as of right now, the way that it works is that you, again, would have to opt in if you wanted to allow any type of adult use industry to be in, again, either a specific township or all of them in your county. So licenses that are available, so the way that it's set up is that you can opt in for one, two, three, all. It's a very, like, pick and choose. So you could decide you were okay with the idea of cultivation, but you were not interested in the idea of having stores. So even within cultivation, there are four different tiers of licenses. You could also make a decision that, you know, you were okay with having up to a tier three, which would allow seven thousands, where it feeds of growth. But you weren't interested in a tier four, which is up to twenty thousand. In addition to that, there's nursery facility licenses. The nursery facilities focus on selling cannabis plants themselves. The products manufacturing facility, that focus is on manufacturing cannabis products. There's also a testing facility license. Testing facilities are the labs where cannabis is tested before it goes to market. And then there's the store licenses, which are for retail establishments. So if you decided to opt in, it's up to you to decide on, also on ordinances, I guess. Again, this is my first time going through this process with an unorganized township. So I'm not sure how that would work in this instance. But I can tell you that the towns and municipalities that I have worked with, you know, there's obviously a decision about the process that would be for local permitting and licensing for the local authorization piece of the licensure. So the many cities and towns that I've worked with, the majority have decided to use their planning board, site plan review processes as kind of the jumping off place for how they're willing to permit these folks, you know, cannabis licenses.
Amanda?
Amanda, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Have these, Farming now, obviously already has one together, planning board. And have you looked at that one? Is that something that with, you know, not too much changes, you could just, you know, kind of copy from what they were put?
Well, and for planning, though, it's gonna be, we don't have any control over planning in unorganized territories. That would be all the LUPCs authority to do so. Basically, we're limited to basically determining, do you want to allow the opt-in?
Oh.
And types of that part of it is not really a relevant authority.
And then, the sheriff's office is gonna police this?
I, that's a very good question. I think the state does correct, Amanda.
The state does what? I'm sorry?
For policing for regulatory, would it fall upon the state or would that be upon the sheriff's department?
Right, I mean, so there's certainly, it depends on exactly what you're talking about. I mean, of course, if there was a, you know, if there was a call.
So you don't have the answer?
I mean, it's not that I don't have the answer. The state certainly, the state doesn't police. So if you're asking whether it's, like, the state police are involved in this?
Well, who's gonna check to see if these people are in compliance? Right, compliant.
Or. So definitely the state is, that's their job, is to make sure that they're here compliant. There's field investigators that, you know, come out and absolutely make sure of that.
And if I'm talking with our attorney, the basic thing, the real decision the county commissioners would have to make would be the opt-in and what you want to opt into. Other than that, it would be the LUPC in or the state doing the regulatory part of it. So we kind of have a more limited role than a municipality would.
So what we're basically saying is our decision would be, how we opt in and which one of those four we opt in?
That is actually the correct limit here.
Is there any, around the other state, is there any? I mean, it seems to me that twenty thousand is pretty big, but maybe I'm wrong on that. Also, if you opt in, can you later, you can update it, so to speak?
Absolutely. I can't imagine that you couldn't change your mind. But to be perfectly honest, I am not a hundred percent sure about what that process would look like, because I've never been involved in that process from a township or municipality to the state.
So we could back off?
But...
I don't, I, I will double check with our attorney on that. My understanding was once you're in, you've opted in. So say if you have one application come in, and let's just say it's for cultivation, then you'll, you know, in that township or for the UT across the county, for all of them, you're in and you can't act on it on a case-by-case basis. Once you allow cultivation in a particular UT.
Okay, so if we had an issue with one section, we couldn't correct that issue?
I don't know if you can change your mind to opt out, that's the question. But I know once you opt in, say if you do the UT as a whole and you opt in for a certain type of cultivation, you can't just pick and choose your applicants. It's either in or out, whether you allow it. But I can ask the question, whether or not you can opt that out if you have that experience.
If we had an issue, right?
Right, correct.
There you go.
I can check on that.
Okay.
Okay. And, yeah.
Who is it? Who is it you're working with?
Oh, so I, this was a conversation was whether we were, you know, going to really bring that, those specifics up yet. This is someone who came to me. They actually have, they have family land that's been in their family for a hundred years, and they're interested in the idea. They, it's in Freeman Township, so...
Okay, I think it's just time to collect it all. We've got it there. It's a small business, put it in the wall. Just to put more wood down there, that's all.
You're saying that everybody up in Nick, you're here?
I'm not saying it just like a big guy.
I tell you what's funny is, I was in Lexington, I was actually on a committee that wrote that opus. And when I was, when you used to, there always was a marijuana legalization bill at Lexington, every year, right? And when you were in the committee, you'd sit there and regardless of what your position was, the people that came and testified, you felt like saying two things. First of all, I'm gonna get high sitting here. And secondly, it was like, whatever you own ought to be legal. And then as soon as they legalized it, in that committee room, putting that bill together, it was all suits and lobbyists. That group was gone. This was all about money now. It was like, holy cow. And then people would come in and it was like, you know, they had all these strains of marijuana, and you're like, I wonder how you guys developed those if it was illegal over time? Just guessing that some of those people, it wasn't the first plant they ever grew.
Well, it is, it is, it is a plant. It is currently the number one agricultural crop in the state. Just the medical industry alone had about $266 million in sales just last year. It's one of the fastest-growing industries. And I know, you know, it certainly has a lot of stigma, but, you know, it is a plant. It's farm similarly to other crops. And, you know, sadly, it doesn't have a kind of big industry, you know, right now in it.
They catch it. Oh, yeah, as the other case, those aren't you, though.
My favorite line from one lobbyist who passed this bill, he said, Maine has passed an act of love. Anyway, do you have any idea how big, how big, how big they've been looking for on that one before?
Oh, you know, they are clearly just interested right now, again, in the, in opening this conversation. They're not, this is a, this is a family who, again, so actually the daughter had moved away. She has been growing legal medical cannabis in California for, I think, her number of years, last four years or so. It's her dream to come back to Maine and have, you know, use her family land and do the same thing there. They also grow organic fruits and vegetables, and, you know, this wouldn't be the only crop that they were growing. But they're certainly not who you're talking about, right? They're not people with endless supplies of money who are looking to take over.
No, no, I'm just, I mean, I don't have any problem with doing this, okay? I just wondered, like, you know, what level we should start at, or that kind of thing. I mean, I'm probably a little hesitant to add the store piece to it in unorganized territories right now, because I don't know how this is all gonna play out locally. I mean, it's getting lined up, and there's gonna be winners and losers and all that, so I'm a little concerned. But I don't have a problem with cultivation.
Well, we have stores, and that put a lot of people out of business.
I get that. Yeah, okay. Jerry, we don't have to speak in the middle of the corner. Okay, no one ever smuggled a product someone didn't want and did it more than once.
Yeah. True, true. Okay. I've got enough information. Thank you.
You too. Good to be here.
Yeah, we're all set. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda.
Fantastic. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any other questions. You know, again, if there is interest in further conversation about these folks and their interests, we're happy to have a more specific conversation anytime.
Great, thank you.
Right, have a good day.
Take care.
All right, we'll move back to new business. Now, you was going to have, oh, we're gonna, you're gonna admire Mike Vaughn. We're gonna, we're gonna see what Mike has to say.
Hate to snash this, if you don't know. Guys, I gave you a list of the cemeteries because nobody knew what the cemeteries were. Well, some do, but not, not for sure. That's why I gave you a list of the cemeteries where they're located. There's three cemeteries down here that's gonna be maintained by others. One's the Samuel Cemetery, the other one's the Freeman Ridge Cemetery, and the West Freeman Cemetery. Here's my thing. We talked about putting it up for bid, mowing every other, other week. Some of these cemeteries, you won't mow. If you mowed them once a month, I don't know if you'd even mow them once a month.
I do, we just weed whack them.
Yeah. These cemeteries are pretty diverse, sure. Back years ago, the county had a gentleman like Nick that was working here, and Nick used to go on all some of the cemeteries. I would like to pursue the option of seeing if we can put together something, instead of putting it up for bid, if we can use Nick, take some of that money, maybe buy some temporary help to help him, what the cost of the equipment would be, and then manage it in a different aspect instead of somebody making a ton of money. They're not gonna make a ton of money, but they're making money off the counter that they didn't need to make.
Are you gonna manage this?
What I would do is put it together and then be the overseer, yeah. Somebody would do the work.
That sounds like a good idea.
Well, I'm just, the more you look at this stuff, the more you see...
I went to some of these cemeteries?
Yeah. And they're all, the cemetery that the county is responsible for right now are relatively small. Like the Huff Cemetery, which is on Route 145, is a really small, small cemetery. But it's covered with piney woods. There isn't blade of grass on it in here. So you're never gonna, you're never gonna mow it unless you took all the piney woods off, and then it's still not gonna cover the grass because of the acid and piney woods. I don't know. And every time, I hate coming back to you, but it's an ever-evolving, ever-changing thing for me, learning this process, so...
That's a Huff Cemetery, you're talking about.
So that's why I wanted you to have the list. I gave you a list of the ladies.
Those three are currently being maintained, you mentioned?
Yes. The, yes, the Freeman Ridge Cemetery is by the Freeman Ridge Association. You've seen your budget book.
Good.
There's $2,000 in there a year that they spend on the Freeman Ridge Cemetery. The Samuel Cemetery is being maintained by the Samuel, you know, the Samuel Cemetery Administration. And that's about $2,000. I would like to investigate that to see what the criteria is for that, is what they have to do for that $2,000, because I don't know. You know, do they mow them every week, whatever it is? Or if I'm not supposed to even look at it, you know?
Mike, you got the one on, from it head, the one that's almost to 145, the one that's on the left in West Freeman, in a Freeman?
Yes, the Charles North Freeman Cemetery. It's on Route 145 in the...
Okay, that's what you call it now. You know, let's take care of an association. That's Nat. Mow that, take care of it.
I don't think it's an association, though. There's only two associations, to the best of my knowledge. I think he does that on his own, but maybe I'm wrong.
Are we far bigger than them?
No, we are not, I don't believe.
No, we don't. Take care of that. He mows it and takes care of it, though.
But I don't think it's an association.
Right, I don't know of any association. I don't wanna know if it's Freeman Ridge Association, which they share Freeman Ridge.
Right.
It's just like the West Freeman Cemetery. That's our cemetery. That's the county cemetery to maintain. But it's being maintained by the Sabbath family, at no cost to the county. They mow that because they like the looks of it, being mowed and properly taken care of. I'd just like to try something, see if we do something a little bit different and see if we can have a little bit better control over it.
Is Nick Capra down for this, too?
Well, I've spoken with Nick, and I think we, with the money that's in the UT budget, we always have part-time help available for Nick in the summertime for projects. Right, Nick, for air conditioners, windows, assorted projects. And whomever we hire to help Nick with some of those special projects around the courthouse, we could probably use to do the cemeteries.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
I have a question. With Nick, do you want to, how will he get the mowers and make it up to the cemetery to improve work?
That's a good question. I mean.
You want to issue, he doesn't have a technical.
That's right. And that's something we're going to have to address and figure out how we're going to do that. If Mike's going to assist or how are we going to do that? In that, that was the one ma- major issue in the past, but he was, um, the previous maintenance worker here, he was a maintenance worker and did have a pickup truck and he was willing to use his own vehicle to do that. Obviously, Nick doesn't have a pickup. Your expectation is going to be an issue.
Yeah. Will work out.
Will work out something.
I just wanted to bring it in.
Yeah.
Very good.
You have a truck?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, anything now? That's it, Mike?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, actually on, on that, we're going to take a ride tomorrow, check them all out.
Okay, good, man. Thank you. Um, under new business, we have the question.
You have the minutes from lot sixteen for people to signature.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the question forth as written, seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Are we going to do a, are we live?
No, we live here and there.
So we can just do now, okay. All was in favor. Okay, unanimous, thank you. We'll move to the treasurers report.
Treasurers report, one tip warrant, one G T warrant, one regular warrant, two payroll warrants, and E F T payment warrant for a.
Okay, do I have a motion for those? And I, I know that we accept them.
Uh, I second the motion and accept the main state, uh, purse. Retirement benefit.
Main state retirement.
Retirement, right. Retirement is including that.
All right, any further discussion on the motion?
I, all in favor of that motion. One thing to the highlights, I think we ought to accept the assistant treasurers report.
Thank you. To the assistant treasurer. Okay. All those in favor of that motion? So unanimous, thank you.
Terry, before you move on, Vicki, do you want to talk about the electronic fund transfer approval for embers going forward? To get the standing approval to make that payment electronically?
Yeah, do you want to do this as a one-time thing or do it every, every time that you have?
That's what I said, going forward every time, yes.
Every time, yeah.
Yes, because now that we're required to submit payment now, we should just note that for the record, so.
And also, I've worked with Bass Mutual, they are here required also to do payments to E F T. But how much are we going to be scheduled to have?
So I think a motion would be appropriate to approve the E F T for embers in 2057.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion, so sign the file. To unanimous, thank you. All right. Item number three, commissioner's budget review scheduled for April 20th and 21st.
At the regular meeting on the 20th and 21st.
So, um, I don't know how long, of course, it's going to take, but we'd like to say we will go from 3:00 to 6:00 P. M. on Tuesday. And if necessary, resume on the 21st to continue the budget review.
Uh, we have to wait and see. Commissioner is going to be available if that's up at 2:00 in the afternoon.
No, 3:00.
3:00. Sorry. Sorry, on the 20th, 20th.
Yes, and I had mentioned this previously, so.
In the same time for the 21st?
Yes, if necessary, yep.
Uh, I'll be in, I'm supposed to be in Los Angeles at that time. But.
Well, we can, we can try to, I think we did it all one day last time. It probably took about four hours.
We, we'll just plan on doing it on the 20th.
You want to try with the stage and we get it done on the 20th?
Yeah, the stage until we finish it.
Okay.
If everybody's in favor of that?
Yes, so everybody knows and plans, everyone with the department heads know that they just need to be available, that you know.
We'll finish it on the 20th.
Okay, one day. And another question I have, in the past, we've sent out a formal invitation to the budget committee members to attend on the 20th. Would you like me to extend that invitation?
Absolutely, Myers. I don't know about the other two commissioners. Okay? Budget committee members?
Yeah.
Good.
And, and I think, my opinion is this Zoom meeting went so well today. So much better than Bass Conference. I could certainly hear the presenters today so much better than Bass conferencing.
Yeah.
I would like to see us continue with this, especially for the budget committee meetings. I think we'll have all, all the department heads here, but for the public, if they aren't able to attend or reach capacity. I think between Mount Blue and the Zoom, I think, I think this is a huge improvement over the Bass conferencing.
That keeps Jim busy?
Keeps Jim earning his paycheck and yeah. Well, cracking the fire.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Vicki?
Uh, Terry, on the Zoom, does that actually record?
Yes, I'm recording now. This is on this. This is just a client.
Okay, okay.
So you can play it back.
Yes.
I hope so. Yeah. I find it different thing to do for them. So we're going to finish that on the 20th?
Uh, we'll, we'll make it happen on the 20th.
Can you have a special commissioners meeting?
I would like to have a special commissioners meeting on the 13th. Uh, we have a variety of executive sessions to discuss before we finish up the personnel thing on the section on the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, give you an update on where we are with the communication center, et cetera. So I could anticipate probably an hour and a half, two hour meeting on the 13th.
Yeah.
Just to be all executive. Huh?
I won't be able to make that.
Okay, you can pick a date when we all could be.
Yeah.
But we'd just like to do it before the budget.
Yeah, I'm busy on the 13th.
That was just a date that we were available, but we'll make it work.
Doesn't have to be Tuesday.
Nope, does not have to be.
Let's go on to 14th.
I have nothing scheduled on the 14th.
Okay. Because you've got way just. 14th, I'm okay. Everyone find it.
No smartphone, Terry?
No, no. Don't like.
Okay, the 14th, uh.
3:00 P. M.
They have a hat test that day, but they can do it in the morning. It'll be 3:00 P. M.
Yes, correct.
Okay, we do, thank you.
Okay, we change it to the 14th.
14th, 14th. So the 13th is canceled.
Yep.
So we're going 14th.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Something I have to do.
And so item five will be on the 14th as well.
The what?
The next item for the elected officials, we can move that to the 14th as well.
Okay. So taking an item off. Good deal. Taking care of the purse. Is that it for new business?
Uh, and then, yeah, that's the new, sorry.
And under openness?
And that should say medical contract, which we already approved with a one-year renewal. It just needs a signature.
Land, grab that.
Put in just one signature.
No, all three.
All. Is that all on that whole business or do we have anything more?
Uh, we have miscellaneous. Uh, I have presented you a copy of an email from the share. He would like to purchase, uh, it was a purchase for the HVAC, correct, Vicki? For the.
Yes, it was, um.
We have an email.
Called the chiller.
HVACs, pardon the HVACs, that's not correct. It's the air conditioning unit.
This one, this one's dealing with, is it, is it, not this email, is it?
Yes, this.
This is the, the.
Yeah, the top part talks about the chiller.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Two, two separate issues. So we have been receiving revenue from boarding of prisoners from Knott's Goff County. And he would like to take the cost of the new, the HVAC system to come out of the revenue from boarding prisoners. And Vicki, how much have you generated today?
Uh, we have received so far, $50,000 from Knott's Goff County. And we just had a renewed voice last week for another $15,000.
So we have the funds?
We do have the funds available.
Yeah. Well, it seems like we're having an awful lot of problems. Sewer problems, water problems. What's going on there?
I think, I think the facility is showing us age. I really do.
Okay, I don't know much here, man, it's creeping myself. Okay, so we need a motion to, um.
Yes, please.
Make us go forward with these projects?
And yes, so let's do, let's do that.
We've, we've got an estimate on the one, $5,500, which I think lasts 50 years, right?
Yeah.
That's the sewer patch, right?
That is correct.
Okay, is there any, I don't see, what's the number on that?
I don't see a number on that. Let me call Doug.
So it sounds to me like we should go number one? No.
Well, the, the number two one has, has $5,500. And they said that should last 50 years, right? They, I see what you mean, down there says one. No, yeah, one and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, one there. I thought you meant one with the H, no. Yeah, that makes sense. The heat, the line's in over here. It's 500 for inspection feasibility and then 500, 5,000 to install the liner and.
I would think that within 50 years, we ought to do something about the building. So it would make sense to me.
Yeah, I think that's, it's not.
Okay, that's what I'm glad. Okay, so do we have a motion to go on?
I just thought we could wait, maybe see until we get that, so we just do it together.
Good. So we need a motion on $5,500, Plan One?
Yeah. Should we do them both together or do them?
Yeah, I'm thinking separately with a different funding process.
Okay. I move that we go with Plan One, they have to spend $5,500 to patch the line.
Take that one. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing that, all in favor? So signature mine, unanimous, good. The second one? We don't know the number. But she's, she's trying to get it right, President. I just wonder what he needed for that HVAC. Okay. Maybe he doesn't know. Good. Terry.
So just, just the chiller will come out of the, uh.
Come on.
Uh, revenue.
Revenue from the warning of the prisoners.
From the warning of prisoners.
Yeah.
That's a chiller.
But he's going, is it, is it cold? Vicki, is that something we can wait to vote on until next week, the 14th?
We could, let me just try Doug.
Okay.
We don't get much rain, so.
Well, we thought.
Doug, Julie, how much is the chiller void to pass to the master? I tried to get hold of him. Can you call me back so we can act on that today? Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, call me back.
Is it under, does he think it's under $10,000?
I don't know. I don't believe so.
I just. Yeah.
Oh, wait. Possibly a credit on the rent.
Oh, you better be down there.
Well, Vicki, I had a question about the warrants. We had labs that were done for inmates and there was many of them for $86.01 for a total of $602.07.
Testing.
I was wondering, what was that for?
COVID testing.
COVID testing, thank you. So we're collecting all this information for the COVID movement and submitting a bill at the end. Our government is going to pay us, right? Hi, Terry.
Hi, Terry. Terry, uh, in January, you were considering a report from the board of visitors for jail improvements. You were going to hold off until you could get up there and look at it.
Was still holding off?
Still holding off.
Till they allow us in?
And I, I, I truly do not foresee that happening until later in the fall.
We passed all the tests from the state. They went up and inspected and good, good. So this group is picking up things.
One for each condition.
According to the state. That important, I don't know. So that's why we want to see, that's why I want to. It seems that it's the same, if you've been following it, it seems like it's the same questions each time. So it's something that maybe we can prepare.
And this is just a thank you note from a donation the county gave on behalf.
I asked him if we find a big two, put all the wire into it. COVID maybe.
So if you want, I guess we can go into executive session and then if I hear that from the jail, when we come into the executive session, we can act on the HVAC.
Okay.
Do we move that along?
No, this, I'm looking.
Okay.
This is, that's just for, it's not, we don't need that.
There's no action, that's just a notification.
She emailed me and I got all that. I was just bringing it up for the citizens of the area.
Yeah, we would. And we know any more about it?
Yeah, there's some, there's some.
If you follow that down, the chiller's going to.
If she didn't send you the email?
No.
I don't hear you.
Oh, well, we need, just call. There's, she got her number right there. Does the number. Yeah. That would be a question why it was in bang on.
Yeah, why was it in bang on?
So West Freeman.
If you feel that. Yeah, I, I got an email from her. Oh. Yeah. Yeah, we could give away. I, you know the government, that's high. I need. So we need a motion to go into executive session.
Uh. Okay, Terry. So, okay, that's probably the reply for that.
Hang on a minute.
Hey, maybe.
Hang on a second. By maybe, Julie's on, on the, maybe we can resolve stuff that may have been issued now.
Okay, so. Okay, I'm going to put you on speakerphone so you can explain it. Okay, I've got Doug on speaker. And I hope you can, and let, I'll let Doug explain. Doug, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Um, the, the quote that we got from mechanical services was $53,000.
Hang on. Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah. Yes, I know.
Stand on.
Okay, the quote that we got from mechanical services was $53,000 for the chiller. Now, we have, if it goes out too big, if you can do that, I'm not sure. We're under trying to contract for mechanical services. And if mechanical services does not install this unit, then I'm not sure that we're even going to service it or warranty. You know, their work around, we mentioned that last time. If they don't install it, they're not going to maintain. So I don't know. I don't know where we stand on that. But it's, uh, yeah, $53,000, but we're waiting for an updated quote.
So we ought to wait.
So we can wait, we can wait till the 14th, right, Doug? So we can wait, we can wait till the fourteenth, right Doug?
Yes, yeah, but they're working on it now. I don't think it's gonna take that long. Hopefully they'll all have that same quote they gave us before.
Okay, but we're meeting next week, April fourteenth, so we're waiting till then, okay?
Terry, as soon as we get that, then I'll, you know, I'll know.
Okay, that sounds good, thanks.
Thank you everyone. Okay. Motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go to executive session. One M R S A four, five, six, eight, family clerk, John Dooley, can we talk to him?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion? So take, unanimous, three zero.